Is Marilyn is on? Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is having a good summer so far. It's not been warm yet, but we're getting there. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole. Today is Tuesday, April 30th. We have with us tonight, to my right, Councilman Billidoo, our Corporation Council Jonathan Harding, to my left, and Councilman, oh, I don't know who else is, Mitch is not coming, you know? Okay, and Councilman Alex Thomas is here with us tonight. On from hybrid, we have Majority Leader Marilyn Rosetti has joined us. I believe we have enough council members to have a quorum. So again, welcome, everyone. We have two items on the agenda tonight. The first item on the agenda is a resolution by Councilwoman Molly Rosado, Councilman John Gale. The resolution that the Court of Coming Council hereby request the presence of the Superintendent of Hartford Public Schools for their or their designated representative to present a comprehensive report on the current status, challenge, and achievements related to the implementation of the Vento Act within the Hartford Public Schools. And we have with us tonight, let's see. Let me get to my resolution. If Molly, if Molly signs on, it's a resolution. I'm not quite sure if Councilwoman Rosado is signed on or Councilman John Gale, who are the sponsor of the resolution. But we can continue. We have our wonderful Superintendent Dr. Rodriguez. Welcome. And you are aware of the resolution that was submitted by Councilwoman Rosado and Councilman John Gale?
Correct, I am. Good evening, everyone.
Right. Well, the floor is yours. Tell us all about, if you have a report to let us know about.
I do have a report, and I believe I'm just going to try to share my screen. And if someone can give me a thumbs up that you can see my screen.
Yes, we can, ma'am.
Yes, wonderful. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for creating the opportunity for, for me to discuss and share with you the McKinney-Vento Act and how we provide what I consider to be essential services for our homeless and displaced students. I'll just do a quick background and context setting. The McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act is the primary piece of federal legislation that ensures that our homeless students have an opportunity to pursue education through federal legal protections and through funding sources like very specific grants. The Act is crucial in ensuring equitable access to education for some of our most vulnerable student populations. And it is an act that is applicable and mandatory for public school districts. And I think it's important to note that, but right, so here in Hartford, right, we have communities that experience concentration of need. And so we have a higher homeless student population than in other areas. And this Act provides the guarantees for all students to have access, right? Regardless of their zip code. And, and when I think about the mission of Hartford Public Schools, which is to make sure that we provide all students with the learning and supports they need to be successful in school and in life, right? Our mission closely aligns to the purpose of the McKinney-Vento Act. No matter the circumstances, right? We seek to provide differentiated support so that our students can meet success. And the McKinney-Vento Act is especially important to us because of the population, again, that we serve. And it is reflected in student enrollment trends, which I'll share with you in a minute, in a minute. But when I think about some of the deeper impact, you know, the, it impacts demographics, chronic absenteeism, and even graduation rates. And before going into those, those data points, I do want to just talk about like the multi-faceted impact, right? Homelessness has a profound, is a profound challenge, and it impacts many aspects of a person's life. And so for us as educators, as administrators, recognizing and addressing the multi-faceted impact of homelessness on students, right? It gives us an opportunity to create a more supportive and effective educational environment for all of our students. And so I can, right, we can think about the physical implications. Our homeless students often face significant health challenges. Lack of stable housing can lead to inadequate nutrition, poor sleep quality, limited access to healthcare facilities. And so these are physical stressors that can make students more susceptible, right? To illness and less able to focus on their studies. And right, the transition, the transitory nature of their living conditions can lead to irregular attendance at school, which of course, right? Then impacts educational progress. There are emotional implications, right? The emotional toll of homelessness on students and their families is substantial. The instability of their living situation can lead to anxiety and depression and lower self-esteem. And so students may feel isolated or ashamed due to their circumstances, which again, right, can hinder their social development and academic participation. And so the stressors of homelessness can affect behavioral and emotional regulation, making it challenging for them to positively engage with their school environment. That connects to, you know, academic performance and that implication, which, you know, the challenges of the unstable housing, coupled with what I just spoke about, the physical and the emotional stressors, it, it does, it can lead to a lower grades and higher dropout rates. And students that are homeless struggle with completing homework, participating in class, and keeping up with, right, their academic demands. Social stigma, right? They, they experience, they might experience isolation from their peers. It can affect, like, impact their, their sense of self-worth and belonging and make it difficult for students to maintain friendships that we know are so important through their development. It might also impact participation in extracurricular activities and social events, all of which, right, are part of our, our work in school to tend to the whole student. There are potential developmental delays, younger children specifically. Experiencing homelessness may face delays in developmental milestones. It can include, for example, language, motor skills, social emotional development. And those can have longer term effects on their overall educational trajectory. There are legal and advocacy barriers. Some of our families dealing with homelessness, you know, can encounter legal challenges such as securing shelter. Some may face difficulties enrolling students in school. This is some of the things that we, we hear, we learn about when we have homeless families that for the first time enrolled in Hartford Public Schools. These are some of the things that they've, they've shared. There are some safety and security implications as well, right? Homelessness can expose students to unsafe, unsafe environments. They might live in shelters where they feel insecure, for example, that there might be lack of security or so that, that leads to a heightened strength and anxiety. Technological, technology and, and access to resource, you know, in, in today's age, right, when we think about lack of access to technology is key to so many of the things that we do. And so, for example, not having access to reliable internet, right? Can get in the way of our students' ability to succeed academically. So I just wanted to share the complexity of the impact on, on this very specific group of students. So I mentioned enrollment trends because approximately 3% of our student population, they're experiencing homelessness, and that's equal to 434 students across grades. Now, this is data for last year. The data for this current year is still preliminary, given that it was only pulled back in October at the state level. But when we look at the data, we're trending in, in a similar direction as we were last year. And this is a significant number, that 434. Because, right, that is, it demands added, an added level of support and resources. And just to put this in perspective, we currently have 29 schools across our city that have less than 434 students. Our homeless population is not spread across all schools evenly. There are schools, as you can see across here, in specific neighborhoods across our city with higher concentrations of need stemming from homelessness. Almost 7% of the student population, for example, at Sanchez Elementary, face homelessness. That does place an additional strain on those schools as the staff work tirelessly. And, and not just at Sanchez, across all of our schools to ensure that their students have access to the academic opportunity that they deserve. And when we think about schools with higher concentrations of student homelessness, right? There, there, we have a concentration in the south of, the south end. But we also see, for example, you know, that, for example, white schools like Weaver, right, have a concentration of homelessness, homelessness as well. So in terms of our subgroups, students experiencing homelessness are, are of course largely students of color, given who it is that we serve in our district, at a greater rate than our overall population. There is a slightly higher percentage of students with disabilities than our overall population. There is, when I think about our homeless population is 33% multilingual compared to 24% of our entire student body being multilingual. So these factors, which contribute to increased challenges for our students because of systemic inequities, are compounded for our homeless student population, right? So they face the brunt of the systemic challenges while also dealing with, right, the hardship and the uncertainty that comes with being homeless. And that's why the McKinney-Vento Act is so important and why we have always prioritized services for our homeless population. The, the other data point, before I transition to the next slide, the other data point shown here relates to unaccompanied youth. And those are homeless, those are students that are homeless and are not in the physical custody of a, of a parent or a guardian. And so, like, when I think about that, even on a personal level, like, that's, that's heartbreaking, knowing that, right? In addition to being homeless, right? They are not with, right, a custodial guardian. But it is, it is the reality. And, and we at Hartford Public Schools, we step up to ensure that, right? These young people facing tremendous challenges have what they deserve to pursue success in school. Homelessness naturally has an impact on chronic absenteeism, right? Without reliable, consistent housing, students face difficulty with coming to school based on transportation difficulties, access to remote school. When I think about what was happening, for example, during the pandemic and other issues like, you know, having access to clothing, personal hygiene products. In a few slides, I'll actually talk about the partnerships that we have to mitigate these challenges. But I wanted to kind of show you the graphic here. And you see the significant spike, right, in 2020, 2021, which was right at the height of, of the pandemic. Nonetheless, right, the, the, the big data point here or the trend is that our homeless students have a higher, a chronic absenteeism trend than non-homeless students. And graduation rates are also impacted by homelessness, right? Chronic absenteeism compounding, compounds that impact. You'll notice the significant drop in 2019, 2020, yes, right? These students struggled significantly with access to technology and having a stable environment to complete their work during the pandemic. This, this was not a problem, right, unique to Hartford. But we have emphasized ensuring that all of our students have access to, right, a personal device and have made efforts to ensure that they have access to Wi-Fi as well. And so now, as we have gotten back to a more stable, consistent school environment, right? I'm, I'm glad to see, right, toward the right side of your screen, right? That, that number is kind of creeping back, if you will, to pre-pandemic levels. So one of the questions was, how do we implement the McKinney-Vento in the district? And what's really important is making sure that our families know about the Act and the resources that are available, right? And so that entails conducting family learning sessions throughout the year to educate our families and give them a space, ask questions to our liaison and other staff members. We also coordinate with, you know, Department of Children and Families and other city agencies to try to connect families to resources in the district and ensure that they understand their rights. We also provide training for all staff about the McKinney-Vento, the McKinney, the McKinney-Vento Act and what the staff responsibilities are. We want to make sure that all staff across our schools understand the resources that are available for families, especially because that the school-based staff often serve as that primary point of contact for our families. And then our district liaison assists in providing support for students and families on a daily basis with, that work largely originating from our welcome center. And so, right, the, the liaison also collaborates with other entities to support our families in need. An implementation that has worked is the close collaboration with our, right, the enrollment team, the, the department who refers families immediately if any red flag is raised when completing the registration process for a family, right? Families are immediately referred to the McKinney-Vento liaison, and all of the pertinent questions, if you will, are asked to determine the eligibility. And with this process in place, we, we begin to remove those barriers for immediate school placement. Now, take into consideration that per the McKinney-Vento Act, participants can be enrolled in school without requiring documents such as like proof of address, birth certificate, or, or medical records. But it's the collaborative nature that is established with, like, the school frontline staff, such as social workers, school councils and nurses, and working directly with them facilitates that process of identifying and kind of referring our families to the resources. And like identifying, do they need school uniforms? Do they need housing? Do they need transportation? Do they need access to food pantries? And, and by the way, I'll also mention that even if a student or a family is not registered in Hartford Public Schools, but they are a resident in our city, we, as the local education agency, provide support for homeless families and students. And so here's just a, a, a list of several community partners that provide essential services and resources for our McKinney-Vento population, right? Dignity Grows, some of you know of Dignity Grows, provides assistance on a monthly basis with hiding totes to help our displaced students as well as their families. While, right, when they're staying at either the shelters or hotels. they also provide our district with hundreds and hundreds of hygiene kits for distribution to families that are not necessarily homeless. You know, Greater Hartford Youth Engagement Team Initiative, they work with us to share current updates and strategies relative to the trends across the state for homeless population. The Boys and Girls Club specifically, you know, students identified under the McKinny Vento participate in after-school programs offered by the Boys and Girls Club. This is a partnership that offers great assistance to those parents and caregivers who are displaced by providing homework enrichment program that includes arts and extracurricular activities to keep our students busy and to continue to advance their academics. You know, our partnership with the State Department of Education, right? They, our homeless liaison has monthly meetings with the State Department of Education. And that, you know, those meetings include sharing of updates and ideas by, you know, liaisons across the state. And of course, sharing trends and trainings that are available to better assist our displaced students and families. And then lastly, Housing, Hartford Housing Authority, right? This school year, for example, some of our displaced families had the opportunity to receive direct housing assistance with a collaboration with the Housing Authority. Right, so housing instability, you heard me earlier at the beginning of the presentation, I was talking about the multifaceted, the huge impact that housing instability has on students' academic development, social and academic development. And so, it would be a valuable initiative to develop, you know, emergency, short-term housing placement for crisis situations. Right, current families, you know, complete the Coordinated Access Network assessment. And oftentimes, there really isn't an immediate space available for their placement. And so that's, that's a recommendation that I, that I would make. And then I have the other, the third bullet there around, like, collaborative community initiatives. These are opportunities for us to engage in further dialogue and partnership. As I think about the need to establish, like, a coalition, for lack of a better word, of, like, local businesses, nonprofits and government agencies to address homelessness, but address it as a community. Is there an opportunity to launch community events that foster inclusion and provide direct access to, like, multiple services in one location? And I know some of this is probably happening at a very smaller scale, but I wonder if there's an opportunity to, right? Community outreach, like, do we, could we establish, like, a mobile outreach units that go into the community to provide services and support? Awareness campaigns to inform the public about homelessness, how to, how to support, how to help? Health and wellness initiatives and/or services to provide, right? Free, low-cost health, dental, mental health services. Implement wellness programs to address the physical and emotional needs that I spoke about earlier. Childcare services, I know that, you know, we, we continue to work on the, in this area, providing, right, those free subsidized childcare services to allow parents to, right, attend to work and to their own training programs. And then personal development and empowerment, right? Encouraging participation in life skills workshops for both young people and our adults. And create platforms for our homeless individuals to share their stories and begin to advocate for themselves. So that's it, that's all I have as a presentation and overview. And I'm available, obviously, to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have Councilwoman Molly Sir Rosado, who was a sponsor of this resolution, joined us. Not sure who else. Ah, Councilman Josh Mitchum is also here. So welcome, guys. I'm going to open the floor up to questions. Can we, let's start with the screen and then we can talk, then we can come back to in person. Questions? Majority Leader Rosetti.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Superintendent. Excuse me. One of the last things you said, so as someone who runs a homeless shelter that doesn't serve families, I'm pretty sure no one from the superintendent's office is involved in the CAN, the Coordinated Access Network, doesn't go to the Hartford CAN. And certainly, that's not any fault of yours. But I'm thinking I would bring it back to the CAN and suggest that you have someone appointed that would attend. Doesn't even have to be at a higher level, because the lower level is actually speaks to the things that you were talking about, the coordination of all the things that are actually happening that sometimes the person experiencing homelessness, the student or whatever, there's so many other things going on, they're not even going to know about that. So my suggestion is, if you can refer somebody to me, that we would connect them and have them attend the CAN meetings. Most of them are still virtual. And I think that would be a very, a really great way to kind of connect some of these actual things that you were speaking about.
Absolutely, thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Councilwoman Rosado?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Dr. Torres, Torres Rodriguez, how are you? I have had an education on BOE in the past month that I never thought had existed. And I saw Council President mention the other day, you know, the knowledge that we have with the Board of Ed, but we've gotten a lot lately. So, thank you for the presentation. The reason why I introduced this resolution was because, you're well aware, Dr. Torres Rodriguez, that I had a family reach out and I, in a concerned way, you know, there was a single mom living in a car with her two daughters in Hartford for a while. And, you know, she had, you know, gone to the CAN and she had gone to CRT and it was like she couldn't get anywhere. And I decided to call the superintendent. And she said to me, long story short, how is this happening when there's the McKinny Vento Act, which is a federal law that provides money so that no students are homeless? And that was very overwhelming, I never had, never heard about it. But long story short, it took us a month and a half. And Dr. Torres, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for you going above and beyond, until finally, you know, this mom and students were able to get Section 8. And they're doing great now. And as a point of clarification, the students weren't from, from the Hartford school system. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Torres, they were from, they were going to East Hartford School, right?
They were enrolled in a magnet school operated by another magnet operator, but they were Hartford residents.
They were Hartford residents, correct. And so I think that, you know, this, I just wanted to see an outreach so that, you know, we could market this more, because there are still a lot of families out there. Some of them are embarrassed and, you know, living on people's couches, living in cars and just won't, won't say anything. And if they don't say anything, you know, the Hartford Public Schools don't know about it. So when Councilwoman Rosetti, so the McKinny Vento Act is a federal act, right? That provides fund. So in a sense or way, these students have a priority to get housed. And, you know, one of the issues that I have sometimes with the CAN or when you call 211, is that the minute you say, you know, you stayed at a sister's house or you stayed at a friend's house, automatically you're disqualified or you, or they send you somewhere else and you don't get the housing that you're expecting to get when you call this, these agencies. And I know, you know...
Can I speak to that, Councilwoman Rosado?
Sure.
So the CAN is very different from 211. 211, and as a provider, we have the same exact concerns that you're talking about. And if anything, 211 is something that needs to be addressed in a bigger way. It was a system that was built, you know, let, how do I want to be? Let's see. It was a system that was built without the actual people who do it. Is it better than it was? Yes. Is it not things just like you said? Because 211, their first goal is to divert someone from homelessness. Because studies show if you don't enter shelter, you're not likely to stay in shelter. But with that said, you're correct, Councilwoman. If someone says, I have, I'm in a car, I'm on a couch, they're not homeless. So the tragedy is that there's a list, there's a waiting list, we don't have enough housing. And I think a bigger discussion should be had about 211. And the people in the CAN, the Coordinated Access Network, which are all the people who serve people experiencing homelessness and others, are in the same frustration level that you are, Councilwoman. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Can I, can I also jump in just to make a related point about what the superintendent was talking about in terms of how McKinny Vento applies to schools? Just because it's worth noting that the definition of homelessness for getting the school assistance, the school placement, is very broad. So if you're staying with relatives or you're staying on a couch, you do qualify as homeless for all the school placement and assistance stuff in McKinny Vento.
Councilwoman Rosado, would you please finish?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so, lastly, I want to say, and I'm just getting familiarized with the McKinny Vento Act, because, you know, there was a time where, you know, individuals that I know were homeless as a child, right? And instead of concentrating on studies, you were worrying, you know, where are you going to sleep and your parents, and no child should go through that. So that's dearly to my heart. Now, fully disclosure, I do work for the Hartford Housing Authority and I know that the BOE has been referring families to our Section 8 department. And they've been very successful, right, in getting them housed. So we're very happy about that. And now HUD has come into place, because HUD are the ones that are issuing these vouchers. And I know that the City of Waterbury is also doing it. And HUD is trying to reach out to more municipalities and agencies and housing authorities in order to provide, you know, vouchers. And I was going to have a conversation with Council President to see if there was a way where the City of Hartford could get also funding and that the BOE also refer families through the City of Hartford, because we do have about, you know, the City of Hartford does have a voucher program, so that it could be expedited a little bit quicker. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rosado. Councilman Mitchum? Maybe it's, you good?
No, nothing bad. I just chimed in at one point, but I have nothing else, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. On the dais, then to my left, Councilman Thomas?
Thank you so much, Dr. Torres, for the presentation. And I don't have any questions, it just was very informative for me. And, you know, I looked at Council President a few times. I think we were shocked at some of the numbers, you know, on some of the schools. My only request is, could you possibly send that presentation to us? Just because I think it has some, you know, informative numbers in there. I think that, you know, would be good for us to have. So if you could just forward that to us, I would, you know, I know I would definitely appreciate it. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, Councilman Thomas. Superintendent, we had our Department of Children and Family presentations, is it last night? Yeah, last night. And a couple of the things the director talked about was also doing programs here through the Department of Youth Services with homeless, you know, youth. So possibly have someone from your office reach out to her? Because I believe she's setting up some kind of programs. The Wish Program, thank you. The Wish Program. And she has a young man, I believe, who's heading it up for her currently. So that's, you know, with 400 students, I see that, I couldn't see your total number for the high school age or the youth age. Yeah, that's a department which, you know, you guys just work collaboratively to try to help, you know, these 400-plus students. Yes, I would love to get a copy of the presentation, you know, as Councilman Thomas asked for. And this is really a, you hear about it, you know, in the community of kids, well, you know, youth, you know, sofa surfing, but did not realize to the extent, you know, of the percentage of our overall student population, you know, is homeless. So this is very much an eye-opener. And this is something which I think, again, when I remember your presentation, we talk about working collaboratively together, because you alone can't solve the issue and the city alone can't do it. But if we all work with the funding that we have also for Youth Service Department with you, we'll probably get more accomplished that way. So, you know, I know it's probably the end of the school year, the opportunity over the summer to organize a meeting. Yes, Councilwoman Rosado, would love to do something like that, you know, getting whoever from the Board of Education, you know, along with the Youth Service Department, along with our Housing Department that receive HUD funds and see what we can do here and work collaboratively. So thank you so very much for that presentation. It was certainly a high opening and I am going to certainly join with Councilwoman Rosado to see if we can put some solutions on the table.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to share the information and for your commitment, shared commitment towards our young people.
So thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it. Thank you. So we have, let's move on to our second item on the agenda. That was quite a great presentation. Our second item on the agenda, item 2.2. This is a resolution from Mayor Arula Lamplum, confirming the appointment of Jeffrey T. Cavalo as Director of Department of Emergency Service and Telecommunication. Director, acting director right now, please join us. And if you would like to bring up anyone with you to keep your company, please do. Well, we had your department presentation. I know you're getting over, I think everyone over the last week or so has been going through some kind of cold or this weather. So I'm going to speak a little bit louder, so you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good, good.
It's not great, but yes.
Yeah, perfect, you know? But as a matter of fact, if you want to join us up here, it would make, like, easier for you. No, we will welcome that too. It's up to you.
I'm good, ma'am.
You're good, all right. So this is the mayor appointment for you to be Director of Department of Emergency Service and Telecommunication. Tell us a little bit about yourself, you know, and what you would like to accomplish as Director.
Thank you, ma'am. So my name is Jeff Cavalo, I'm your interim Director of ESNT. I've been there for about, in that role for about 60 days. Prior to that, I've been here as your Deputy Director for about two years. I came here in February of 2022. Prior to that, I've served about 30 years in public safety. I did three years with a local municipality as a lieutenant and then I actually left there, rounded out my 25 years as the Acting Chief of Police there. I did 22 years as a state trooper. And prior to my service with the state, I was a paramedic for four and a half years or so for two different municipalities. I had a master's degree in emergency management with a minor in public administration. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice administration. I have a associate's degree, which I started, I'm very proud of, that I got right here in Hartford, at Capital Community College. I started there, yeah, started my whole career off. I was a jump off for my public safety career. I started there in 1989, I became an EMT and in 1982, I graduated paramedic school. So I am proud of that. What I hope to accomplish is to continue our forward momentum there with the center. We have gone from, you know, a staff of 14 to, of dispatchers, to a staff of 38. You know, 19 of them are fully trained, there's another four that are fully trained call takers with 15 in the training program headed by Tony Carter. They're in various stages of training. We have seven openings and about 35 applicants. We have seven openings and about 35 applicants that have passed the HR's entrance exam. So, that's my vision. Hopefully, in the next year or so here, I'd like to see us fully staffed, fully trained. I'd like to see us improve our answer times, if you remember during the budget hearing, we discussed that. I'd like to see us be CLEA certified. We're the only ones that are not. The Police Department is certified in CLEA, and that's the gold standard. And the department, the Fire Department is also accredited. I'd like to see the dispatch center be accredited as well. And that's my vision, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm going to open the floor up. So since the last time we started, the council members on the screen, we'll start with the council members here in person. Councilman Billadu?
Thank you for joining us tonight, Director Cavalo. So, I know we've talked to you before at your budget hearing, and I've met you a couple of times at your department. I know you've made some important changes there, provided some great leadership. So, first of all, why Hartford for you? And second, what would this department look like at its best under your leadership?
So, multifaceted question there. Why Hartford? I would say this is the capital city. This is the largest dispatch center in Connecticut. It is one of the largest in New England as a combined center. So it's quite an honor to be a part of that workforce, quite frankly. Secondly, I think what we have done, and I certainly didn't do it in a vacuum, we had a lot of help doing it, is that we have changed the culture there so that, you know, it's a very harmonious, inclusive workspace. I know you know that from working with the staff or coming into work with the staff. I'd like to see that rounded out with full staff. I think that once we get to a full staff, all those things we've done thus far are just going to blossom into even a better workforce. They're still being held, you know, from time to time, as we discussed in the budget hearing, and nobody wants to do that, right, with families and other obligations. People want to put in their time and go home after 40 hours of what is really a rigorous job. So what I'd like to see is a fully staffed, where people are, if you choose to work overtime, it's a choice. You come in and do your 40 hours, you do your due diligence to do a good job here, and then you get to go home and enjoy your life and your family and be compensated for the work that you do here. That's my vision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Thomas?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I was just looking over your resume. It's probably one of the most impressive resumes I've ever seen. I just want to take this moment to say I appreciate your service to the state as well. When I see that you were involved with the investigation of Sandy Hook and the investigation of Ms. Ann Lee, those are, you know, two of the major, most major crimes that happened here in the State of Connecticut and in my lifetime, for sure. And to have someone that was involved at that level, you know, here with us, I think it's a blessing. And we should be proud to have you involved here, here in the City of Hartford. So I just wanted to say thank you. And you've also gotten the Life Saving Award, not once, but twice. So I'm just so impressed by your resume, and I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you have done. And I'm happy that you're proud to be a Capital Community College alum as well. That's where I started, and I'm just loading you up full of affirmations. But I'm just really happy for you, and thank you for serving the state, but I'm more so happy that you're serving the city.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
No, I appreciate you, brother.
Thank you, Councilman Thomas. You know, what about UConn, you know? Okay. Council, Majority Leader Rosetti?
Thank you. Oh, thank you, thank you. So as someone who was lucky enough to go on a tour recently, given to me by Acting Director, I can't, number one, say how impressed I was, but as someone who, you know, I have people who work for me, so I'd like to think this would happen. When he wasn't around, a couple of people who worked for him just told me what, you know, how different work is, how much better it is, what has happened there, the things that have been put in place. And I think that's a testament to what he has done, that your people that you work with want to take the time to say that. So, I, you know, I fully support him coming on as permanent. You know, if you were there again, you saw the reflection in the diversity of the staff, you know, Hartford residents, and really, it's such a tough job. I mean, it's such a tough job when you think about what they do. So, I just want to thank you, and I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Councilwoman Rosado?
Thank you, Council President. Director Cavalo, Councilman Thomas took all the words that I was going to say, but, you know, I just want to say thank you for choosing and staying in the City of Hartford. I can't think of anyone better to run this department than you. You know, sometimes when you work in these departments, integrity and empathy have to be there, right? And so I know that you endure all those skills, so that's why I will support your appointment to Director 100%. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You started a second career. This is a second career for you. What, as a second career, you know, from your past experience with the State of Connecticut, what have you brought with you that you have learned that will make you a better department head now?
So, this continues to happen to me everywhere I go and everything I do, is that I learn how little I know about what I think I know. And so, having worked in the state police and having worked in a local municipality where I was in charge of dispatch centers before, I still find myself constantly learning, and that humility helps me ingratiate myself with my staff. And so I think that's what I've learned, is that just when I think I haven't figured out, there's something new.
Well, I totally agree with you. You know, one of the things which I have become very impressed with you is your staff and the respect that they have given to you. It certainly shows the type of person you are. And Hartford is lucky that, listening, that Councilwoman Billadu was like, "Good question, why Hartford?" That was a great question, you know, that you have chosen, you know, to work for the residents of the City of Hartford. I totally agree with you that, you know, I think the city is the best city in the entire State of Connecticut. You know, so I'm going to be that prejudiced. So, thank you for wanting to serve the residents. I neglected to actually ask you to introduce your counterpart that is with you at the table.
Anthony Carter, the Director of Training for ESNT.
One of the things I wanted was to ask you, you know, is when you came aboard, you took on a lot of the training aspect, because, you know, we were down so many staffing. What did you, how did you design the training part of your program? Is it something that can be shared with other department? Because for what you accomplished in the short time with training, and, you know, those staffing and the actual classification of that job does take some knowledge base, and you were able to choose candidates who actually went through the training program and get certified. So, what can you share with us that we can utilize within the city? You know, as, you know, a lot of our staffing that are coming aboard are younger staffers, you know, that are being hired with the city.
Well, all I could tell you in this instant case is that when I arrived here and saw the deficit of employees, I knew that we could not train them one and two at a time, that we needed an academy, so to speak. And I could tell you through my experience, having been a staff instructor at the State Police Academy many moons ago, we were able to train 80 state troopers at a time. And I know from talking to Chief Barco, they're training, you know, 30 or so firefighters at a time. So, I basically said, "I don't understand why we are not training, you know, groups at a time." Not that there wasn't, you know, struggles with that, but the second part is how to build it. That's where Anthony Carter comes in. He worked at the State Police Training Academy after me for eight years. And he's a master trainer. And so when you ask me what I did, I hired Tony.
Makes sense. Makes logical sense, you know.
We sold a lot of the stuff that we do.
Yeah. It's the people you surround yourself with make you look good.
Yes, ma'am.
So, good job. Well, that is all the questions I have. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to confirm the resolution?
Send it back to the...
Send it back to...
Favorable.
Yes, yes. Send it back to Council with a favorable recommendation from CAP.
Second.
Second.
Right. The motion has been made and properly seconded. You got it. Good. Any discussions? Seeing and hearing? No discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstention, any nays? Seeing none, the favorable have it. Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
You are, we will be sending back to our council meeting on the 13th, a favorable recommendation for the city to make you the Director of Emergency Service and Telecommunication. You know, I wanted to say ESNT, but I'm trying to be proper here. It's a real name. So congratulations. Thank you very much again for joining our city, and thank you very much for the service, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Well, those are the two items on the agenda. I believe we have no other business. And so I will call this committee of a hold to a close.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.